... with the liberty and justice for all. Honor to Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas one of state under God, one and indivisible.
Oh, thank you very much. Thank you, Brother Rogers. Oh, and one thing before I call the meeting to order, it is our Fire Marshal Shane Renberg's birthday today, so happy birthday, Fire Marshal.
Happy birthday.
So, we do have a quorum. We will call this meeting to order. Do we have any citizens' comments?
No.
All right. Item one, consider and take action on minutes from previously held meeting of Commissioners' Court on August 20th, 2019. Questions, comments, additions, deletions?
Hearing none, Judge, I move that we accept the minutes of the Commissioners' Court regular session of August 20th as presented.
I'll second the motion.
Motion made by Commissioner Gisland, second by Commissioner McCam, to approve the minutes of August 20th, 2019, as presented. All those in favor? Item passes. Item two, consider and take action on a resolution supporting Keep Athens Beautiful entire recycling and electronic recycling grant applications. With us today, we have Ms. Carol Morton. Would you like to address the court concerning this?
That is the flyer that we're going to get out. We appreciate you all supporting us in this. We are going to do it on September 21st. We know that tires are a huge, huge problem. I know every time I do a cleanup for Athens, we have so many, it's unbelievable. So, the tire is a big thing, and the recycler that I work with is amazed that Henderson County still has as many TVs, big, ugly TVs, that we're still trying to recycle. So, we hope to do that. We'll do it over the Judicial Building. We'll spend the morning with two semi-trucks there. We'll need to, we'll have a count of the tires, and once that truck's filled, we can't take anymore. No businesses will be allowed to bring them in. And I've talked to Sheriff Bo Hillhouse, thank you, and he is going to help us with some labor that day. His tires are heavy, and no rims and things like that. And it's going to be countywide, and I can send you this flyer digitally so that you can get it out to your communities in your different precincts.
Questions for Ms. Morton?
Does it say here where they're going to be set up at?
We're going to be at the Judicial Building parking lot. It's at the top, it's at the very top of the flyer.
Carol, I did this last time I was Commissioner. I had a precinct, and it was a huge deal. I tell you, I've never seen anything like it. TVs came in like I've never seen. So, I think it's a really good deal, and I'm really excited.
Yeah. And you worked with the same contractor that I've been working with for years.
Yes.
She's out of Keep Texas Beautiful, and she works really well with me. I'm really happy to work with her every year.
Fantastic. Questions, comments?
No.
Ms. Morton, thank you very much. We appreciate what you do. Gentlemen, we do have the resolution in the backup, and it reads as, whereas Texas Commission on Environmental Quality encourages Texans to consider additional recycling options for their communities for tires and electronics. And whereas with the reported population growth of 1.53% annually, it is the responsibility to the environment that such recycling events be conducted for the growing community. And whereas the Henderson County Commissioners' Court is committed to the betterment of Henderson County by showing environmental stewardship through such an event. And whereas Keep Athens Beautiful and Henderson County Commissioners' Court strive to create and preserve the natural beauty and environment of Henderson County. And whereas Keep Athens Beautiful is capable and willing to provide services within Henderson County to address the environmental concerns through awarded grants. And now therefore be it resolved that the Commissioners' Court of Henderson County, Texas, through adoption of this resolution, supports Keep Athens Beautiful in its efforts of applying for tire recycling grants through the Piney Woods Resource and Conservation Development, and an electronic recycling grant through the Commodity Recycling Solutions to support a countywide tire and electronic recycling event to be conducted on, in Athens, on the 21st of September, 2019, from 9:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m. noon. Entertained a motion.
I'd like to make a motion, Judge, that we accept the resolution supporting Keep Athens Beautiful and Tire Recycling Electronic Recycling Grant Application.
Second.
Motion made by Commissioner Thomas, second by Commissioner Tulley, to approve the resolution supporting Keep Athens Beautiful in Tire Recycling Electronic Recycling Grant Applications. All those in favor? Item passes. Item number three, consider and take action authorizing a payment of $3,300 to Keep Athens Beautiful in support of the tire and electronic recycling grant applications. Gentlemen, along with this, in support of it, $3,300 is a matching portion to make this program go. The aforementioned organizations are giving these grants, and there needs to be, they are matching grants and need to be supported. And we're asking to do that today. The proposal is to use it from sanitation funds that is currently budgeted, since we have those amicably placed. Any questions or comments?
No questions, Judge.
Entertained a motion.
So moved to approve.
I'll second the motion.
Motion made by Commissioner Gisland, second by Commissioner, excuse me, Commissioner McCam, to authorize payment of $3,300 to Keep Athens Beautiful in support of the aforementioned grant applications. All those in favor? Item passes. Thank you, ladies, very much. We do appreciate your efforts. Item four, consider and take action to allow the Henderson County Sheriff's Office to renew their agreement with the Drug Enforcement Agency Dallas Field Office. Sheriff?
Thank you. Good morning, Court. This is basically just to renew our agreement that we have with the DEA Dallas Field Office. It's a little confusing because it is, the agreement is actually with the Dallas Field Office, but our investigator works out of the Tyler Office. And what they do is, they basically will repay or reimburse the county for overtime up to, I believe it's $19,000 a year. We've been doing this program, actually we started it again last year, and, but we did it several years ago for, for a lot of years, and it's a great program. And since they, since we've started doing it with them again last year, they have conducted many, many investigations here in Henderson County with the DEA being lead in the investigation. So, it's a, it's a true help to our office and it's a true help to Henderson County. And it's an all-around good deal for it.
Questions?
No questions, Judge.
Looks like a good deal to me, too.
Entertained a motion with the Sheriff's authorization to sign.
So moved to approve.
And I'll second.
Motion made by Commissioner Gisland, second by Commissioner Thomas, to allow the Henderson County Sheriff's Office to renew their agreement with the Drug Enforcement Agency Dallas Field Office with the Sheriff's authorization to sign. All those in favor? Item passes. Thank you, Sheriff. We're going to have to skip around. We're four and a half minutes too early for our public hearing, so let's move to item six, which is consider and take action to authorize the sale of a 1996 Ford dump truck to the city of Star Harbor in the amount of $10,000 from Precinct One. Commissioner?
Yes, Court. This truck was bought in 2002, I believe, and we got a lot of use out of that dump truck. It's a nine-yard dump truck. It was a good truck. We used it constantly, but it took a point where it needed to be removed out of my fleet. And I did take it out this year to see if we could make it without it, because I purchased a new dump truck earlier this year. So, it was sitting, and the work got out, Star Harbor was looking for one. I talked to them about it and exactly what they were looking for, looking for a dump truck, had some mileage and some use, and, because they're not getting it down on the highway. They're going to keep it in the, in their little city. So, it worked perfect for them. I let them come get it and try it, and it all, it worked fine, it's just wore out. So, it didn't need it anymore. So, I would like to make, let them purchase it for, I thought, a fair deal of $10,000. It's, it can help them out and get us, you know, give me some extra money to buy me something else, which I'd be desperately, so.
Questions for Commissioner Thomas?
And I did offer it to the other Commissioners. I don't think they were too interested in it, and it just used up. So, I'd like to make a motion that we sell the 1996 Ford dump truck to the city of Star Harbor in the amount of $10,000 from my precinct.
Second.
Motion made by Commissioner Thomas, second by Commissioner Tulley, to approve the sale of 1996 dump truck to the city of Star Harbor for $10,000. All those in favor? Item passes.
Thank you, Court.
Item number seven, consider and take action on approving Eustace ISD various tax resale lots located in precincts one and two. Lauren?
Good morning.
Morning.
Okay, these are properties, there's 90 properties in total located in various subdivisions in Eustace ISD that were struck off of the school. They are being bid by one person in the total of $16,529. It does meet all the requirements for Eustace ISD, and they have already been approved.
Commissioners, would you all like to make any comments?
I'd just like to thank Lauren for, and Eustace ISD for getting these back on the tax rolls, because they've been off the tax rolls for quite a while. And they're properties that, some of them I went and looked at, some I looked at on the computer. They're grown-up lots, they're not taken care of, they're just sitting there, and they're not getting any tax dollars. So, this will give us away, and this is through the Eustace hard work and Ms. Montgomery's hard work of getting these done. So, I think it's good. And there's 40, I think, in my, or 41.
Sounds about right.
Properties, and they're all, like I said, by one owner.
Commissioner Tulley?
Making his, second what he has said, there is one lot in the back of your packet that I did remove out. But all the other ones, most of mine have been on, not on the tax roll since 1999, or as far, far back as I could tell, one of them was 1999. Most of them are '05 and '06. So, it's, Eustace ISD has done a great job to bring these to us, so I'm ready.
Questions? It is a good point. Three years ago, two years ago, Eustace started addressing their backlog of properties that they had, and this brings to a point where the inventory's down to...
I will, from where we started, which was roughly probably five, over 500 lots that were sitting out there, I can confidently say that we were down to less than 30.
That's great. That is really great. Well, we thank you for your hard work and Eustace ISD's aggressive stance at helping to get these back on the tax rolls. Anything else? Entertained a motion.
Well, Judge, I'd like to make a motion that we accept the, the tax resale of these IS, Eustace ISD various lot resale lots, there are several of them, like 41 in Precinct One, for the sale to the one owner that's made the bid.
In Precinct Two, or we're doing them separate?
All together.
Precinct One and Two.
Okay, Precinct One and Two, I'm sorry.
Second.
Motion made by Commissioner Thomas, second by Commissioner Tulley, to approve the various tax resale lots from Eustace ISD located in both precincts one and two. All those in favor? Item passes. Thank you very much. It is now 9...
One comment. We always make the comment, it's great that we're getting these back on the tax roll. There is one additional huge benefit. Sheriff, would you like to speak to that one? Cleaning up these lots. Because on many of those lots, there's been abandoned single-wide trailers that have been used for unsavory activities. And that is what you have been fighting. And this kind of goes in a synergy between the Eustace ISD, the Commissioners' Court, and the Sheriff's Department, as well as getting them back on the tax roll, and that benefits all of Henderson County. But the main thing I think it's really doing is cleaning up those lots to clear, help you clear out those activities that we're fighting. Exactly. Thank you, Sheriff.
Commissioner, I think we also ought to, another agency that, that it's going to help is also the Fire Marshal's Office of...
Absolutely.
With the same problems that the Sheriff faces on a daily basis.
Yep, ties right in there.
Yeah, a lot of those lots that I looked at yesterday, I, I couldn't even find it. I mean, really, it's a road and so much overgrowth. A lot of them were just, I stayed in the truck and didn't get out.
There you go.
Dug them from the road. Thank you.
It is now 9:18, and we have a public hearing scheduled for 9:15. So, at 9:18, we need to move into public hearing to discuss the 2019 proposed tax rate for Henderson County. It is at this time that individuals that wish to speak to the proposed rate to come forward, we will need your name and address for the record. But please do, if you have a comment you would like to make at this time concerning the proposed rate for Henderson County in 2020 budget cycle, now is your time. Move out. Seeing that we have none, I'll make one more call. Okay. Entertained a motion to move out of public hearing at 9:19.
So moved.
I'll second the motion.
Motion made by Commissioner Gisland, second by, excuse me, Commissioner McCam, and I'm sorry, Commissioner, that's twice today, to close public hearing. All those in favor? Item passes. Item eight, consider and take action on approving Eustace ISD tax resale lot 148, Section D, located in Hidden Hills Harbor subdivision in Precinct Two. Ms. Montgomery?
Just another one of those easy-peasy ones, meets the requirements of Eustace. They approved it, we just need for approval.
Commissioner Tulley?
In your backup, I've took a pictometry picture of it, and it shows the, the lot that's in question and up for sale. And so, I'm ready to move forward to sell this lot.
Any questions from the court? Hearing none, entertained a motion.
Judge, I move that we approve the tax resale lot for Eustace ISD, Lot 48, Section D, located in the Hidden Hills Harbor subdivision in Precinct Two.
I'll second his motion.
Motion made by Commissioner Tulley, second by Commissioner Thomas, to approve the Eustace ISD tax resale lot 148, Section D, located in Hidden Hills Harbor subdivision. All those in favor? Item passes. Item nine, consider and take action on approving Eustace ISD tax resale lot 420, Section B, located in Cherokee Shore subdivision in Precinct Two. Ms. Montgomery?
Same.
Commissioner Tulley?
Same thing. A lot of trees, a lot of wood.
Any questions? Hearing none, entertained a motion.
Judge, I move approving the tax resale lot for Eustace ISD, Lot 420, Section B, located in the Cherokee Shore subdivision, Precinct Two.
And I'll second his motion.
Motion made by Commissioner Tulley, second by Commissioner Thomas, to approve the, the Eustace ISD tax resale lot in Cherokee Shores. All those in favor? Item passes. Thank you very much. Item 10, consider and take action on financial reports. We have none today. I'm sorry, Ms. Harris. Item 11, consider and take action on payroll distributions and accounts cash sheet.
I do have biweekly 17 payroll totals.
Questions for Ms. Harris?
No questions, Judge. Moved to approve biweekly 17.
Second the motion.
Motion made by Commissioner Gisland, second by Commissioner McCam, to approve the payroll disbursement for biweekly 17. All those in favor? Item passes.
And I also have the UI account sheet.
Questions for Ms. Harris? Entertained a motion.
So moved to approve.
Second.
Motion made by Commissioner Gisland, second by Commissioner Tulley, to approve the accounts cash sheet for the period ending July of 2019. All those in favor? Item passes. Item 12, consider and take action on submitted contracts. And I believe the first one that we have is the professional services agreement with DEETs Engineering.
Yes, this contract is to do a structural analysis of the, this building, the annex building, so that we can see how much weight we can actually put on top of the roof. Apparently there's a structure up there that we'd like to put a generator on as an emergency backup for this building. So, we need to get that, get this analysis done so that we can do that.
And this was that step to ensure that we had the structural integrity to place the generator on the roof that will be used for our IT room backup. And at this point, our IT director, would you give a briefing of the importance of this generator set?
We've been in this building since 2011. The server room that we have here has a small battery backup set that we have for each rack. That's what we've had since the beginning. Actually, even before that, when we were with the courthouse, we had the same thing. It would be an individual backup per each rack or each setup that we had. Those only last for a few minutes when we have a power outage, especially when you have like large switches that are powering more phones and other devices, or say a server set. So, say you get 20 minutes out of, out of a battery backup, that's enough time if we're on location for us to safely shut down the system before it damages and shuts it off. So, in a power outage, I get an alert that says the power is out. If I'm more than 10 minutes away, most of the time I can't get here by that time. That's not the most crucial part. The most crucial part is that this is the central services for photo registration, for the courthouse, for judicial, for their phones, for their computer network connectivity, as, as well as the library. The jail, of course, having its own setup with a generator, they don't have as much outage as we do because of the fact that they have something to switch to. So, their server set's a little bit different. And it is our designated replication place, or disaster recovery, whichever one you call it. But for here, we've been talking about a generator for probably, I'd say eight years, something along those lines. The thing was is that initially we ran into the issue that the air handler in, in our server room is a three-phase air handler. So, the generator jumped in size by wattage and by price. So, when we looked into it, the feasible thing to do was to add basically a secondary aircon unit. That was a smaller unit, 110 or single-phase or whatever you want to call it. So, we had that installed, and we've been trying to get a generator that would be for that size, which is more along the weight and the price point of what we would be looking for. The downside to it was that the generator company that I talked to initially, they kind of backed away from it, saying that we needed an engineer's report. Probably would have been good practice anyway to do that. There is a pedestal that is on this building that we believe would be good. It's air handler type pedestal. But we wanted to make sure that, we just didn't stick something on that and it'd cause more damage. Also, with the roof renovation that was recently done, this is the opportune time to probably do all of that. But that pedestal, I believe that we're going to have no issue with it. The weight we're looking at is somewhere between 500 to 1,100 pounds, depending on the model of generator that you're looking at. So, as far as that unit goes, as far as that pedestal goes, I hope that we don't have any issue with that. I don't believe we will. But what will happen at that point is that we should have enough time, if we have a major power outage at this building, that there will be a switch from battery backup to the new, to the generator so that, and then, of course, when that generator goes off and it comes back to main power, that the battery backup would hold that long enough for it to switch over. And that's not thinking of, is that the synopsis you were hoping for?
Questions? This, this is the agreement for the engineering so that we can address that issue. They have been on site, but to move, and have inspected, but to move forward, we have to enact this contractual agreement. Questions? Entertained a motion.
It does say it's not to exceed $4,300. Ensure that that is kept in check.
Yes.
If so, move to approve with Judge's authorization to sign.
I'll second the motion.
Motion made by Commissioner Gisland, second by Commissioner McCam, to approve the contract with DEETs, DEETs contracting for services on the annex building with Judge's authorization to sign. All those in favor? Item passes. Our next contract is Fire Marshal with Accurate.
Yeah.
Accurate. Ms. Lee?
This is just updating the DIR contract. It was changed with the most recent legislation session, and we just need to get this updated.
Questions for Ms. Lee?
What does this software do? Shane?
It's, it's just a search engine that we use to track people.
Okay.
Lot of properties and things like that that we have in our system here. We can locate people.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Entertained a motion.
So moved to approve, Judge.
Mr. Commissioner.
With your Judge's signature.
Second.
Motion made by Commissioner Thomas, second by Commissioner Tulley, to approve the updated contract with Accurate for the Fire Marshal's Office with Judge's authorization to sign. All those in favor? Item passes. Item 13, consider and take action on request for right-of-way permits. I believe we have a couple today. Commissioner Tulley?
Yes, Judge. The Pain Springs Water Supply Corporation is looking to do a bore underneath County Road 2829. I spoke with the Superintendent of Pain Springs yesterday, and it is going to be a two-inch PVC casing with a three-quarter inch poly service underneath our road, County Road 2829, and all fees are paid.
Questions for Commissioner Tulley? Hearing none, entertained a motion.
I move to agree to a bore of a two-inch PVC casing with three-quarter, three-quarter inch poly service underneath County Road 2829 in Precinct Two.
With your authorization?
With Commissioner's authorization to sign.
I'll second the motion.
Motion made by Commissioner Tulley, second by Commissioner McCam, to approve the right-of-way permit for the Pain Springs Water Supply Corporation to bore County Road 2829. All those in favor? Item passes.
I also have a bore in Precinct Three from Bethel Ash Water Supply Company. They would like to bore under County Road 3800 for a private-to-private service.
They would like to bore under County Road 3,800 for a private-to-private service. All fees are paid, all information is in your packet, and they have a check attached.
Questions for Commissioner McCam? Entertain a motion.
I move that we accept the right-of-way for Bethel Ash Water Supply Company to the road bore under County Road 3,800.
Second his motion.
Motion made by Commissioner McCam, second by Commissioner Giesling, to approve the right-of-way permit for Bethel Ash Water Supply Corporation to bore County Road 3,320, no, excuse me, 3,800, with the Commissioner's authorization and sign. All those in favor? Item passes. Item 14, consider and take action on submitted budget amendments.
I have two of those today. The first one is position budget amendment, since position budget is a part of our approved budget, I need to have that approved. That is moving the two CPS lawyers from the DA's office to the county attorney's office.
Questions? Entertain a motion to amend the position budget.
I'll make that motion, Judge, if we amend that position budget from the DA's office to the county attorney's office.
Second.
Motion made by Commissioner Thomas, second by Commissioner Thule, to approve the amendment of the position budget, 2019 position budget. All those in favor? Item passes.
We're just moving the money, correct, because the attorneys are staying with the DA, and the county attorney will be hiring replacements.
Right, right. We're just moving the positions, not the employees. And then the second set reflects that amendment, along with a few other items that need to be addressed, including some of the building repairs that we've been doing lately.
Questions?
No questions, Judge.
Entertain a motion.
So move to approve.
I'll second the motion.
Motion made by Commissioner Giesling, second by Commissioner McCam, to approve the budget amendments as presented. All those in favor? Item passes. Item 15, consider and take action on payment of bills.
Yes, sir. This morning, I do have bills that I need approval on in the amount of $309,079.91.
Commissioner Thomas, questions?
I have no questions, Judge.
Commissioner Thule?
I have none.
Commissioner McCam?
I have none.
Commissioner Giesling?
I don't have any today either, Judge.
Entertain a motion.
So move to approve.
I'll second.
Motion made by Commissioner Giesling, second by Commissioner Thomas, to approve the bills in the amount of $309,079.91. All those in favor? Item passes. Item 16, consider and take action on submitted plats.
One in Precinct 2, and all fees are paid.
Okay. Commissioner, two or one?
Yeah, he, we each one have one, I guess.
Okay. Let's go ahead and start with, it's a replat?
Uh, this is a replat that we had last week that didn't have a signature from Tarrant Regional on it. They recently went back and had Tarrant Regional sign off on it, so it's in the Pinnacle Club. It's a replat of lots 540 and 541, making 540R.
Questions for Commissioner?
It's just two lots in the one.
Yes, sir.
Entertain a motion.
Judge, I'd like to accept the final plat of Pinnacle Club Base 2, Section A, lots 50 and 51, replating to lot 50-R with, for filing purposes only.
I'll second.
Motion made by Commissioner Thule, second by Commissioner Thomas, to approve the replat in Pinnacle Club subdivision, creating lot 540R. All those in favor? Item passes. Commissioner Thomas?
Yes, court, I do have a preliminary plat for subdivision, it's called Thurman Estates Number 2, and I've got some copies here, and also I've got Tyler here to kind of explain this one to us a little bit. We've been working on this one a while. It's all the stamps, signatures. Can y'all share one? It's ten lots in the 2 area. Gonna have Tyler here to answer questions. We both, like I said, spent some time on this subdivision, and...
Attorney?
Good morning, Judge and Commissioners. This is a 10-lot development, like Commissioner Thomas says, this is only preliminary plat, so we got some time, you know, before it's all finished, he's got to do a little construction, and he's got to go through final plat, too. So, like Scotty says, he's got all the appropriate stamps. There's a few variances that would be required. The right-of-way is a little skinny, so, I mean, he had to kind of fit it in there, so kind of did the best he could, but it doesn't meet a requirement, so that would be a variance. Also, the lots, as, you know, is very typical on the lake, you know, the lot fronts, I mean, the sizes are all above Quarter Acre, because all these would be sewed through West Cedar Creek. So the lot sizes are fine, but they're a little skinny, which is not really unusual for a lake-top lot. So, Scotty, what was the other, other variance? We had 10 variances.
Yeah.
There is a requirement that two entrances, and of course, it's a, it's a-
One entrance.
It's a one entrance for the cul-de-sac.
So the propos- they're proposing two variances? One of them is lot size?
Ten, actually, because each lot is its own variance.
Right. But there is a lot size variance that's being requested?
Yeah.
And there is the one-way-
One entry.
One entrance.
Right.
And then the right-of-way, so ten altogether, but three kinds, you might say.
With the lot variance, how is the utilities, um, excuse me, with the right-of-way variance, how is the utility easement handled?
We asked them to have a utility easement outside the right-of-way. We asked for a 15-foot, I talked to West Cedar Creek this morning, they wanted a 20, which, we have some time to get all that dealt with. That would just move the utility easement back toward the house, but we still had 42-foot offset for the building line, so there's room for the extra utility.
How long, how long is the entrance run?
It was a little over, this is the developer, Brad Thurman. How long was the total load? It was a little over 600 foot. From the gate to the cul-de-sac.
It was about 600, Commissioner. Yeah, we've been out there a couple of times, looked at it. It's a pretty development, it's going to be a good asset to the county, it's a really pretty lot set up.
Yeah, beautiful.
And he's gone to a lot of trouble, or a lot of time, and it's going to be a nice addition to our county.
What is the proposed construction of the roadway? And I'm going from memory off of the subdivision regulations, that the variance, without a variance, I believe it had to be curved and guttered if you were going a certain size. Can you explain that and help me remember?
At Quarter Acre, the requirements are curve and gutter, that's true. Now, none of the area out there had curve and gutter.
Okay.
So, we kind of saw it as, we didn't see it as a variance, we just saw it as not exactly applicable, because, you know, the neighborhood didn't even have that, that would be kind of hard to put in, out there.
Agreed. That was one of the restrictions in that, was to control density. Well, what I see here is that we will need to, if the court wishes to move forward, it will be to approve the preliminary plat with the individual variances.
Yes.
We can do this in one motion, if the court wishes, but I do reiterate and stress that no properties, according to our subdivision regulations, can be sold until the build-out is complete, as far as the infrastructure.
Right.
Is the developer aware of that?
Yes.
What's Tarrant, Tarrant Regional signed off on this? Yeah, I guess they have.
Yes, they have, on the top left.
Yeah, got it. And this will be a septic-
Sure.
It'll be sewer.
West Cedar Creek Lake, it's water-in sewer.
Right.
Okay.
And they've already been out and marked their spot, I think, where they're going to put it.
That's the key, so we'll wait until more.
Any other questions?
There's not any other questions, Judge, I'd like to make a motion, we approve the preliminary plat for Thurman Estates Number 2, located in Precinct 1.
And the-
For the judge.
And the variances.
The variances to be approved also. There's 10 variances, that would be, I don't think he's prepared to write a check for that variance today, for 10 variances.
Second.
Motion made by Commissioner Thomas, second by Commissioner Thule, to approve the preliminary plat for Thurman Estates 2, and to approve the associated variances requested. Any further comments? All those in favor? Item passes.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other plats? Okay. Item 17, open and consider bids.
No bids today.
No bids today. Item 18, do we have everything signed up?
Everything I've received, but I'm still missing the resolution.
Item 18, consider and take action to adjourn.
So moved.
Take it. Motion made by Commissioner Thule, second by Commissioner Thomas, to adjourn. All those in favor? Item passes.